Okay, good evening. This is the Plainfield Water Pollution Control Authority Public Hearing for April 10th at 7:00 PM. I will read to you the legal notice that was sent out. The electors and those qualified to vote at the town meeting in the town of Plainfield are hereby warned that the Water Pollution Control Authority will hold a public hearing at the Plainfield Town Hall on Monday, April 10th, 2023, at 7:00 PM, and will hold a special meeting at the Plainfield Town Hall on Monday, April 10th, at 7:30 PM for the following purposes with. The public hearing will address and discuss the feasibility of the following: to design, construction, installation of a replacement generator at the North Treatment Plant, and construction of two secondary clarifier tanks at the North Treatment Plant. All as further described in analysis prepared by Fussin' O'Neil at a cost not to exceed $4 million. The special meeting of the Water Pollution Control Authority will consider and act on the following: be resolved or selected acting as the town's Plainfield Water Pollution Control Authority recommends that the town of Plainfield undertake and authorize the issuance of bonds and notes to finance the following project: design, construction, installation of a replacement generator at the North Treatment Plant, and the construction of two secondary clarifier tanks at the North Treatment Plant, all as further described in our analysis prepared by Fussin' O'Neil, not to exceed the cost of $4 million. Dated, uh, dated, Plainfield, Connecticut, the 28th day of March of 2023. Kevin Cunningham, first selection, Art Herr, W. Gagney, second, Scott Gardner, select. So with that, if you didn't have a chance, there are some papers in the back. It talks about the legal notice that was read, and it also has a paper that should be colored, which talks a little bit more about the project. Before we get started on the discussion on that, if you wouldn't mind, what you're really looking for is this section on the back page, I believe it is, as listed as the Clean Water Fund. And a clean water fund is broken down into a couple of sections, but the grand total there is about $3,950,000. So why don't we start talking about what this really is? Uh, we need to do some upgrades at the plant. Haven't been doing upgrades for many years. They really need to get done. So, uh, we are responsible as residents and taxpayers to be able to, uh, do those upgrades. I will say that we have tried to plan this out a little bit. Um, if we were financing about $3 million, at a 20-year estimate, that's about $200,000 a year with debt of about $80,000, which is about to expire in 2024. So based on that, the, um, average user will have an increase, uh, in two or three years. That'll be due for the new project, and it is going to have an average of $35 increase for your sewer rates. If you have a, uh, drainage sewer, that's for sure rate will increase over those, uh, that period of time. So, um, what we're looking to do, obviously, there's more detail to just what I just read. Uh, we have clarifiers, we have generators, we have a lot of things that need to be done and upgraded. We contracted out with Fussin' O'Neil, and Fussin' O'Neil has given us our best opportunity to do what we need to do to do the upgrades. Um, we can talk a little bit more about financing if you can ask Kelly any questions, or, um, Stephanie, who runs the plant, for questions, but we have some documentation from Fussin' O'Neil. This is one of the first of, well, I shouldn't say first. This is one of the many steps that has to be done in order to process this through our bonding company. First, we call it a band. It's the actuary note, the note that actually starts it up. So if we eventually get to the point where we approve this as a town, we then take out a band. The band lasts for one or two years, and we pay for that as well. Uh, then we go to a bond, and we're hoping at that time with, with the, um, the federal government is in raising the rate, it does help us out with getting a better interest rate uh, for a, uh, going up to a, um, a bond. So, uh, what we have to do tonight is, uh, we talk about this, we have questions that come out, we can answer those questions as best we can. There is no vote as of tonight. Uh, the Board of Water Pollution Control Authority talks about this on the next meeting, which is right after this, at 7:30. Uh, we then, if we approve it, we will bring it over to, uh, other boards and commissions. One of those boards, uh, would then be back to the board of select, which would again talk about it tonight. And if we all agree upon it, there's a list of dates that occur that will be listed up for you, and we'll talk about the, uh, town meeting date, the, um, uh, and then actually go into a referendum. But that's, this has to go in front of, after the board of select, if they were to go that far tonight, we would add, we'd have to go in front of planning and zoning tomorrow. And then after that, we would be talking to the board of finance, and I think they have it on their agenda for, for finance for Wednesday night. Uh, then we put a legal notice out there into the paper for all of that. Where we would actually be talking about a, um, town meeting, special town meeting on April 25th at 7:30, and then if that passes from that town meeting, should send forward to a referendum will be May 9th, between noon and eight. All this information will be shared with you again on the town website so you know exactly step by step how it goes. But we are, again, um, I would just like to say we're behind the times in updating the sewer department. We really need to make sure we do the right thing. Um, if you have any questions about this, this will be the great time to bring it to the attention of the town. If you wouldn't mind, just bring it to the microphone, just state your name, and what your question might be, we'll see what you can answer it tonight. So is there anybody in the audience who has any questions? Please come to the microphone and state your name.
Uh, the, um, the process before the bond, the actual bond, what do you call that?
It's called a band.
A band?
It's a, it's an anticipation note, so you're applying for the bond.
Okay.
While you're doing that, you're paying the interest on the band.
Okay. And what do we anticipate that amount to be?
Well, up to $4 million.
Okay. For that band?
The band could be expenditures up to $4 million, will not exceed $4 million, and then we would bond it with Connecticut Clean Water Fund. So the Connecticut Clean Water Fund is part grant and part bond. So we're looking at 20% or 30% grant. It estimates like a little over $1 million savings with a grant, and the rest we would bond with the Connecticut Clean Water Fund.
There are some, some good things out of this. Connecticut Clean Water Fund would, uh, put their portion in, which is $1 million. Helps out tremendously. Uh, meantime, we will still be looking for grant opportunities, and if the grant comes in, it can redo some of this as well. So, uh, we are looking steadfast for different rates that might be applying towards us also.
Can you, um, can somebody explain a little more?
Sean Peterson.
Can somebody explain a little more exactly what you're doing? You talked about a generator and some clarifier tanks. Is that all, or is there more to it?
For this, this portion of it, that's all, that's it right there.
Okay.
Um, for anybody who'd like to take a tour of the clarifying tanks? I'm really happy. Um, you have the tanks which are actually doing the rotation. It continues to make, uh, separation of the solace of the liquids, and from there, um, the sludge is then moved from that facility along to its next destination. But that's, this is something we've really needed for a long time. How many, um, years are we talking about very minimal impacts of what goes on in the sewer department? Well, we have to start working on these things now. Um, and again, the Clean Water Act, uh, Clean Water Fund is a very good helper because that's $1 million right there.
Does it also include the agitators and all that?
That's what those are, the clarifiers.
Clarifiers, okay. So it's the tanks, the clar, the agitator, the air?
Yeah, this, it turns it around, yeah.
Okay.
Hoping I'm describing that properly?
Yeah, the clarifier includes the entire tank and all the mechanisms, including the tank.
So we had this discussion a little bit before this about what, what we do, uh, whether it's do the improvements that are needed, that are greatly needed, or you don't. And I can tell you, you don't want to have the other side of the dumb part, because of the eventual downside of this is if you don't take care of the sewer department properly, the state, just to have the state committee come in to take over anything, because now you're paying their rates. And it's, they'll tell you, okay, now this needs to be fixed, that needs to be fixed, and you have to just, you have to just do it, period, because it's theirs. Um, but I think this is a great option for step one. Um, you see the rest of that, other things that need to be taken care of. Um, we do plan on doing that, that's why we have this plan. We have the whole plan up here of what we'd like to do. Um, we did get, now I don't want to confuse anybody, but we do have opera funds. We were, uh, afforded opera monies from the federal government, the state gave us this money. We also applied $3.4 million worth of the money towards the sewer department. It's one thing that we haven't really taken care of in a long time, so I thought that might be the best way to go. So there's, there's a lot of other things we need to do. I mean, if we had a list of the upgrades that are needed from Stephanie, um, if we would probably have two or three pages long, so.
Is there a lot of, of improvements that are needed?
Just for the record, if you wouldn't mind just saying your name, so she can get it.
Thank you, Cory. Um, is there a lot of improvements after this that still need to be done, or is there minimal?
Absolutely, there's, there's a whole bunch of things that need to be done. We're looking for different grants that'll take care of a lot of, most of those.
Do you have a total on what the total project would be?
Of me and everything?
If we fix what needs to be fixed and?
Well, right now, what needs to be fixed immediately is what's listed there for the Clean Water Fund was to end, as we mentioned already, and then there are some other items which should be taken care of by the opera funds, so.
Right, but I mean, so between what should be fixed and what needs to be fixed, is there a total of what that number would be?
So on our five-year capital replacement plan, there, the number is a lot larger than that, with wish lists thing, things that need to be done, and things that will need to be done in the future. For infrastructure agents, we just need to keep putting more money into it to maintain it. So these will knock a couple of the projects off the list, but then there's other projects that aren't as important that will move back to the top of the list.
So this will be ongoing.
So this will be ongoing. These are some of the bigger ticket items, and once these are off, lower ticket items will take its place. So for example, we're going to need new boilers, so eventually that will move up to the top of the list, but I don't expect.
These are the top of the major?
Yeah, so these are the top.
Oh my God, Dave?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, if you added up all of those pieces, it still is a, a good number. I mean, I looked at it one year, it was like almost $20 million between all the different pieces you put together. But if you do it and stage it properly, and I'll give you the example of what I mentioned earlier, um, you know that you have some, um, uh, right now there's a bond that's, that's in our roll off in about three years. That's why this makes sense here, starting to do that here, because that way you won't see the major impact at the end of that three-year period when this actually starts needing to get paid for. So keep on planning the same thing, you can plan about a few years out about what the next steps will be.
So you're going to have rolling bonds kind of to be like?
Well, it's not so much rolling bonds, if you have enough, well, like she said, they sound as big as these, but if you continue to make sure you have enough money in your collection, and we think we will, because, um, there are possibilities of businesses coming into town that will help offset that. So absolutely. Now, I can't stand here and say they're definitely coming in, or there's definitely things along the line, but at least you know that there are opportunities that will be coming up, and when they do, it will definitely help to offset the other things that need fixed.
Hey, sure. Um, I'm wondering, are those figures of the $20 million include the fact that we will be postponing those other budget items? Does that include inflation rate if those numbers?
Well, uh, everything, everything works, I mean, I've seen the, uh?
Uh, that, yeah, see, Kevin, that's not what I'm saying. I said, those estimates, if you put it off two years.
Oh, yeah, the rates may go off, the rates may go off. Absolutely.
And, uh, and so those are in the estimate of $20 million.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, the cost of living goes up, the prices and everything goes up, so you absolutely, these things will go up if you, if you just don't do it.
Right.
Anybody else?
Yeah.
How is this going to affect the average taxpayer that's not into the sewer, into the sewer?
This isn't going to affect anyone not on the sewer.
Okay.
Yeah, if you're not on sewer right now, you're not paying a rate, so it shouldn't affect you.
Okay.
Unless you'd like to make a donation.
Or start a venture.
Did it put a law in any way?
No. It's Dawn, right, Dawn, for the record?
Okay.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I have another question. Uh, on the, on the page down the front, it says, uh, there's a line that says, Becky calculated a $50 to $55 sewer increase would be needed to cover, uh, the extra debt. Can you expound on that, please?
Yes, that was our first estimated calculation. And once we recalculated, uh, the number is closer to the 35 increase to the sewer used to be over the course of the years, uh, by the time we start paying off, off debt. So that's our initial cut calculation before we calculated our debt coming off. So that number is closer to 35 right now.
Okay. The plan was to be, uh, to stage up those increases, so the first year could be 10, and the next year could be another 25. Um, to try and make it so that you're not going to get hit by everything all in one shot, um, but we still have to go out again, we have to go out to a band, get that first, and then up to the bond.
But right now, we're showing, um, a shortfall of $300,000 toward our debt payments, is that correct?
Yeah, so that's why we needed the extra, uh, very, increase in the sewer used to be of that 35, uh, to cover that extra multiple costs. And that's actually closer to $200,000, uh, right now. So $300,000 is our initial estimate, that's gone down to about $200,000, 35 extra per sewer.
So we could see a decrease in our rate there?
Not going to.
Isn't that not our worst? Yeah, well, I know.
Cross your fingers.
Well, Earth-wise, everybody laughing, that's a serious question.
Sean Peterson, one more question. Earlier in other meetings, it was a discussion of possibly repairing things, but it's decided that the bond was in the best interest. How much was the repair worth?
The repair was going to be for about $890,000 to repair the existing two secondary tanks, not including Connecticut tank. And then our engineering firm, Fussin' O'Neil, did a study a while ago, and said that our current tanks are undersized for the design of the plant, uh, so we would like to get more capacity than we need to design. So we would like to get the new tank when they was worth a million, just to repair it, two existing ones, when just right at a million, we could get a brand-new tank with branding and everything.
It kind of makes sense if you think about the fact that if you're expanding the size of capacity and other businesses are coming in, then you should be okay. If you're not, you're just going to repair them, then you're kind of stuck at that level, and that's it. So this was, this was the time to do it, and the suggestion was from Fussin' O'Neil to, uh, you know, go with bigger tanks, the newer, the new tanks.
Would it, would it not be a better, a good idea to station one a couple of days later to another one? Or was it just test them all at once? That way they don't all fail at the same time?
It's not a bad idea, they just do it with the Clean Water Grant. This could be just a one-time, we're getting a grant. There's no guarantee, we can apply to get it, and there's no guarantee we will have access to those funds.
All good questions. Anybody else? With no more questions, I would say that this meeting has now come to an end, and the time would be 7:18. Um, for those who want to continue along the process, uh, we do have a 7:30 meeting. This is a special WPCA meeting to talk about this item. Um, we also will be discussing other things after that. So we don't start though until 7:30, because that's always the legal notice, at 7:30 for the special WPCA. Thank you again. Uh, you can always ask other questions, you can email the town. If you thought about something later on, you can always ask an email, or just give a call. Thank you. Good evening, the time is now 7:30 PM. This is the Special Water Pollution Control Authority meeting, and I'll just be to order. Roll call.
All right, Gagney.
Scott Gardner.
Kevin Cunningham. Uh, do you have minutes for the March 27th meeting? No? We can always motion to, uh?
Unless you have to do that, I just don't have it.
I just don't feel quite about just telling you to look at it real quick, so.
I'll make a motion.
Table.
Table.
Part of the motion to table?
I'll second that motion.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right, um, item D has public comment, will you allow public comment at this time? Every now and then we go ask a new business, new business is item number one. Special meeting for the Water Pollution Control Authority will consider an act on the following: be resolved that the board of select acting as the town's Plainfield Water Pollution Control Authority recommends that the town of Plainfield undertakes and authorize the issuance of bonds and notes to finance the following project: design, construction, installation of a replacement generator at the North Treatment Plant, and construction of two secondary clarifier tanks at the North Treatment Plant, all as further described in analysis prepared by Fussin' O'Neil at a cost not to exceed $4 million. So this is a next step. What's your plan here?
I guess, I don't know.
Oh, sure, sure. All right.
My motion to move to the next step. The board of finance?
Yep, this comes up in, um, this motion to approve the expenditure for bond, abandoned bond, not to exceed $4 million, and to send this forward to the Board of Finance, and also to the, actually to the board of select, that's the next step.
That's right. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve up to $4 million to construct the two clarifier tanks and a replacement generator at the North Treatment Plant, and to send it to the board of select.
Motion's been made? Sorry, I did that to your, but if you repeat that one, which is sort of mature, you did that right.
Make the motion to approve up to $4 million to replace the generator and second, two secondary clarifier tanks at the North Treatment Plant, and to send it to board of select. Maybe it's what I used to say.
Losing it.
All right. I guess that's what I was thinking. And I will second that, yeah.
Any other discussion? Very normal, favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion to adjourn?
So move second.
7:34. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Our board of select meeting is immediately following, so we can go right into that. Because we normally need a 7 o'clock, we had to cancel the 7 o'clock meeting, so this is calling to one of the special board select meeting for April 10th, and I ask you please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, and the vision of all, liberty, justice, for all. Roll call.
All right, Gagney.
Scott Gardner.
Kevin Cunningham. Item C, approve meeting minutes from the board of select meeting from 3:13:23.
The only thing I saw was in the, uh, item nine. I made a motion, I believe Scott made the second, not Kevin.
Okay, any other changes?
That was it.
So you have a motion within one modification.
I was just making a guess, Scott. I'll make a motion to approve meeting minutes for 3:13:23, would that change?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item D, we have a few items here for, uh, item one on old business is to discuss and act on bypass on procurement policy that has not been processed yet to the state D. So we're going to entertain a motion to continue.
So move. Kevin, before we move on?
Yep, I'll come back, but I know I should.
Okay.
Public comment?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, I'll come right back to it. Motion to be my art?
Second.
And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And, um, I know I did take it off only because usually on a special meeting you don't have public comment, but I will allow it this time, so I'll go back to that. If anybody, for the public wishes to speak, this will be the time. So, anybody wishing to speak at this time, public meeting?
Sean Peterson, I want you to recall what the, uh, this is really pertaining to the bypass, the planning and zoning for town projects. I'm still against that, which won't be heard. Um, I think it's a bad idea to take that step out of the project process.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
I should, I'd like to state that I agree with Sean, it would be better like that.
And just for the record, we need to get your name.
I said it.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear it.
Roz Shidditt.
June Gagney, I'm a member of Planning and Zoning. I think it's a bad idea because it's going to admit, omit the abutters from knowing what's going on. So the abutters would possibly suddenly see the town putting something on their property next door, and they would have no clue what it was. So part of Planning and Zoning is alerting the abutters and letting them know what's happening. So I'm, I'm against it also.
Okay.
Nelson Lemieux, can you explain to me why you would want to do that?
I will get to that when we get to our discussion on it.
Okay.
Okay.
Ed Shidditt. I just want to know how we can expect everybody who does business with the town and builds a house and all this, and whatever, have to follow all these rules, and we just don't. Don't make any sense.
Anybody else?
Hey, Cory, I agree with that, Dave, what, I agree with Ed, because we should, if we're going to make the rest of the world go through the process and everything, we should be doing it as well. There should be no special circumstances.
Audrey Lemieux. Um, I didn't hear the whole discussion from before, but I gather if we're going to bypass the planning and zoning, then why can't we have everybody bypass it? And then what would be the final design? You know, if something goes wrong, what are you going to do?
How many towns look like that?
You know, it just doesn't make sense to not follow the rules that we have been following for years.
Okay, anybody else?
I don't see where it's making sense to bypass, uh, grants. Uh, and I agree with everybody else here on that one.
Okay.
I also agree with everybody else.
All right, just for the record, if you wouldn't mind?
My name is Cathy Messdameker Harris, and I also agree with these people about, um, it's a bad idea to bypass zoning, planning and zoning.
Okay.
Tom Singwitz. Uh, I do have a huge disagreement with the bypass thought process as well. I look at it as planning and zoning has been in place for a long time in this town, and like any other board or commission, there's a reason why we have this check and balance process that applies not just to the average citizen, but of course applies to the government. And the government, I believe, should not get a pass to be able to avoid having to be inspected and voted on by its people for something that involves going to a public hearing. Uh, they should be able to have a citizen's participation opportunity at a meeting and be able to be heard, whether therefore against a town-related project, uh, which includes going to a planning and zoning meeting.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Madam Harmon, I would like to, uh, disagree. I do not want the bypass. The government should be held accountable as everyone else, and people have a right to question at meetings and so forth, and I agree with everyone else. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Uh, we'll go back into old business, item number two. Uh, discuss an act on second reading for the checking, uh, cash policy as presented. Any questions on this, or are you sorry? Nope. Anybody want to make a motion?
I'd second, I'll make a motion that we accept the checking cash policy as presented.
Motion's been made. I'll second that. Any other discussion? Very normal, favor say aye.
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 I'm standing.
Okay. Ayes have it, and motion is passed. Item number three is to discuss the second reading of policy and state of alcohol and illegal drugs as presented. And any motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the, uh,
Policy statement.
Policy statement for alcohol and illegal drugs as presented. I'll second.
Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item number four, discuss an act on proposal for authority within the Connecticut General Statute, eight dash two. This is something we obviously brought up last time, but you've seen your package, you have some information from our town planner on this issue.
I just want to add this. I hope that you guys have got that chance to read this as well during our last meeting. I think I was concerned that I wanted to hear from the Planning and Zoning Chair. I received an email, I can see that you wrote a copy of this email earlier, so if you want to read this into the paper.
Okay.
I know Ms. Charles, Karen, Pam, I'm being here this evening, but if I know, I'll read it in.
Could you give him a microphone, so we can hear it?
I can announce to the.
Okay, thanks.
All right. How about I do that? I got a good lot of voice, I can do it.
Okay.
So this is an email that I received this afternoon, again, by, at the last meeting addressed to, uh, to the board, that I would like to hear their opinion of Planning and Zoning Chair on this issue, because it's so directly affected to Planning and Zoning Department. So, the email I received, or ended at Mr. Cunningham, Mr. Gagney both received this afternoon, is, "Good afternoon, members of the Board of Selectmen. I am writing to you today because I've read the minutes of the previous Selectmen meeting and noticed that there was a comment that a Selectman wanted the opinion of Planning and Zoning Chair to speak with the Board of Selectmen in regards to the town zoning exemption discussion. Although a formal request for opinion for attendance was not sent to me from the Selectmen's office, I am very interested in sharing my opinion, given the importance of this topic in my almost ten, twenty years of experience on the Planning and Zoning Commission. I am planning on attending this evening's meeting and would be happy to share my thoughts in person and take questions from the board. I have another application, so I will be a little late to the meeting. Please note, I am speaking as an individual, as the commission, and not as a commission, has not been held," I'm sorry, I read that wrong. "I am speaking as an individual, as the commission, has not met to discuss this matter. Our next meeting is tomorrow night. Please note that the planning and zoning process allows for thorough review of project plans, ensures consistency with the plan of conservation and development, ensures compliance with rules and regulations, such as adequate parking, setbacks, buffers, and noise dust control, as well as conducts public hearings, which allow for open, public review and scrutiny of applications. This is an added layer of protection for the abutting property owners and the town as a whole. This also allows a process that is accessible to the residents. All residents and businesses, business owners, are required to abide by these regulations, and it would be unfair to the people and businesses of this community to have town projects bypass the same requirements and the same level of public scrutiny and review. Thank you for your time and consideration. I look forward to seeing the board this evening and discuss this issue in more detail. Signed, Carla Discharles."
Okay, that I can see.
Discharles can make it here in time to do that, but I guess this is kind of echoes what we've been hearing from the crowd of Rome. Worth another.
Okay. At the last meeting, I know you talked about reports from, all the reports from John Rappa. Did you get any further detail on that?
No, I didn't.
Okay.
So I, I wasn't so concerned with that. I did all the research, in Mary Ann's research here. The biggest thing I had a problem with was who the legislative body is, because the charter points to the town meeting as legislative body. It doesn't point to the Board of Selectmen. What Mary Ann gave us here definitely distinguishes legislative body from Board of Selectmen. They're two different entities. Okay, so I have that issue. I do have the issue of not having plans drawn up by an engineer in-house. We have no engineer. So yes, I do, I have an issue with that, because I want to make sure anything that the town does is done properly. This exemption not only exempts you from planning and zoning commission, it exempts you from zoning regulations. You don't even have to abide by regulations, so you can't tell me that the building is going to be constructed according to regulations. Maybe building code, yes, but, so anyway, with that said, I believe the Board of Selectmen is not the legislative body. Therefore, we have no power to vote this, approve it or deny it. So I see the only option is a motion to either take no action or to send it to town meeting.
Okay.
So if you're confident enough to send it to town meeting, I have no problem with that motion.
I'll get there. I will get there. Anything else?
Um, probably is, but the overall viewpoint is really just.
So I have a couple of questions I have, and in response to comments that were made, and also it's something you just mentioned. Town legislative body. So, anything in section eight-two, if we want to make modifications to it, then we'd have to go to town meeting?
Anything in eight-two? I don't know, I'd have to read the whole thing, but, okay, so that's fine. I think there are other examples of where it's just the Board of Selectmen. There are other examples, like the opt-outs that we just did in the past years, A U, in the parking spaces, that was done, brought to the planning and zoning.
But it also exempts the Board of Selectmen, it has to have approval of it too.
That's right, there's a process, and it's written out in the general statutes. This general statute just says legislative body, not legislative, like this, okay? It says approved by two-thirds vote of this legislative body, of the municipality, or the Board of Selectmen, okay? She gives a few examples of that, and then examples of where it would be just the legislative body. So, so determining, what I read out of the charter last, last meeting, kind of said who the legislative body is. Is the town meeting, right?
But we still voted on eight-two as a board, correct?
What's that?
So back on August twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one, legislative board here, our board, voted to opt out of two things in eight-two.
Different process though.
So I did ask also, um, Mary Ann, our town planner, what other properties, town properties, do we actually go through the process for P and Z? And so, the research that came back has two items, but neither one actually went to P and Z. So, if that's the way we're going to go forward, and we haven't done it in the past, and, I mean, I could give tons of examples of what we haven't done in the past.
So is the logic that if something wrong in the past, we repeat it because we have precedent?
Well, I'll get there, I'll get there. Because I'm going to need clarification on a few things. We put a town hall garage up. The Board of Education's putting a gazebo up. We have Shepherd Hill sidewalks, Lazer Road sidewalks, Town Road Bridge. We have an H-back project that we just did here, not only here, but also in the town hall. We have an electrical upgrade coming up. Quinbog River Trail is going to be updated. We did the roof for DATCO, did that roof over the town garage. So, those things haven't been done, you haven't found anything that's been done in the past, and I'm not saying if we haven't done, it's, you should fix it. However, I will pick the fix-it part of it, okay? So I want to have clarification on what has to go in front of P and Z. Does our fire suppression system operate, so it's going to be done here at the town hall? Have to have an engineer pay for that? I'll go through the whole list. How about the new windows downstairs? How about this project that happened at Prairie Road Ave, doing the light project? How about the two military tanks that we refurbished? How about the digital sign in front of the police station? Operates the senior center? Operates the town hall pool? H-back replacement at the police department? The six thousand gallon tank we want to put up in the highway department, to be installed? Police department backup generator? Each one of those items, we're going to ask you some questions on those. Do they require engineering costs?
You're asking any?
Yeah. Will they require now an engineering cost? Come in front of P and Z?
I don't think everyone knows.
Probably a majority.
Yeah, a majority, probably.
Yeah. So, we have engineering costs that are now associated, to which we now have to budget in. How long is that going to make the delays for the project also? Well, that was, each project's a little different. And when we do that, we're talking about the engineering costs and the actual cost for putting it out in front of P and Z in the way. What are we talking about, our budgets? Because that's going to cost money. So, our budget that we just put in front of the public, we'll be putting out there, it's going to have to include all of that. And where are we going to get the money from for that? I'm going to guess, it might be an employee or two who might not be here, or other things are not going to get done.
I have a question about the engineering.
I've actually done, but here's, here's what I'm going to say. I make a motion to move the question to a town meeting. By authorizing the Connecticut General Statute, eight-two E, legislative body of the town Plainfield, Connecticut hereby declares that all real property owned by the town Plainfield is and shall be exempt from the town zoning regulations. Making a motion to move the question to a town meeting by authorizing Connecticut General Statute, section eight-two E, the legislative body of the town. That's what you were looking for. Connecticut hereby declares that all real property owned by the town Plainfield is and shall be exempt from the town zoning regulations.
That's the question you want to move to town meeting?
Yep.
So you make the motion.
I just did, I just did.
That's your motion, okay. I'll second.
Any other discussion?
Yes. Just to clarify, eight-one B B.
Oh, yeah, true.
Eight-one B B, eight-two O F, eight-two P, O into P is in public hearings, those are all opt-outs. I just wanted, you were asking, yes, and they have process. Before we move on, you made your vote. As far as for the record, my vote is, yeah, we can move that question to the town meeting.
We had a motion in a second. Yeah, you got another conversation. Since we're discussing it, any reason why?
I think the reason to the evidence, we've heard from P and Z, we've heard from a great number of town vote here tonight. It's my personal opinion too, anything that I'm subject to, my town is subject to.
Yep.
We need to simplify the process. We don't need to go around the process. I know it can be inconvenient, but this is a, this is a very slippery slope. You look at the seal there, so sixteen ninety-nine, you know, I think we've got it by without having to do workarounds.
Well, I think I just gave you examples of why we've had workarounds for years. I can't name one school, a one school that has actually gone.
Because we did something wrong, that we're going to continue to do things wrong. There's a P and Z for a reason, there's a ZDA for a reason. We need to recognize the authority of these commissions. We don't work around these commissions.
Connecticut General Statute allows you to vote or bypass it. Other towns and municipalities have done that. I don't think we're asking for something that is.
I'm not suggesting that you're asking or even saying that you're trying to do something that's outside of bounds. It's clear that there is a state statute. I believe there's maybe five towns that have taken advantage of this. We got to wonder, like, what's the common sense behind doing something that a hundred and thirty-five or more towns haven't done? To that point, can we find out how many towns do we, that was one of my questions.
You're more than welcome to do the homework yourself.
No, we got five out of one hundred and sixty-nine. The other question I had, though, about this, well, as a result of this happening, that happens, our engineer right now is need cost.
Yes.
They won't do plans for us for these projects.
We got to pay probably a little extra, because there's a lot of extra work, and we, you know.
And if we have.
Most of these, by the way, would have to require a separate engineer to put all the plans together, so it is possible.
Right, I get the cost, I do. They usually budget into projects, budget it in, but if we had our own in-house engineer.
Trying, I'm trying.
We could do that too, right? But still, by exempting, you're taking away the public com, the public hearing. So, that's a big problem with me too. As you know, try going against the A U's by right.
And I'm not going to go debate it back and forth, I'm just going to say, what public hearings did we have before?
Yeah, they did it wrong.
They did, well.
They did it wrong. And just so you know, schools don't have to go for special permanent. They're just regular permanent, they're not special promoted on the.
Motion in the second, any other discussion? Very normal, favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Scott, we already got your, your vote, thank you. Item number one on new business is only one request for consider an act on tax refund for the tax collector totaling one hundred and forty-one thirteen. Nicholas A. and Lauren E. Stevens. What's your pleasure?
Make a motion to accept the tax refund, one hundred and forty-one dollars and thirteen cents.
Motion in the second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The next one up is item two, we've had this on our discussion before. We have a little follow-up to it, so let's discuss an act on acting on one forty-one, if you could give some, a little more background on this, would be helpful.
Mary Ann Chanati, town planner. This property is adjacent to a directly abut, but is not included in the enterprise corridor zone. Reason being, I believe, back when the enterprise corridor zone initially was enacted in town, that property was known residential, and residential properties are not allowed by state, by the state, to be included in an enterprise corridor zone. It has since been changed to industrial. The property has been approved for a one million square foot warehouse distribution center on the property. We have an extremely interested developer who, if they, they right now have a purchase and sale agreement, they're going through their new diligence phase, and they will bring in an anticipated one hundred to two hundred fifty jobs at the onset, and ultimately between five and six hundred positions. Excuse me. They are looking at Plainfield and two other sites, one in Massachusetts and one in Rhode Island. This would bring much-needed jobs to town. It would bring great, it would be great for the tax base, and I do hope that the Board of Selectmen would approve requesting that the E C D add that property to the enterprise corridor zone. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them.
Much sorry, I'm going to be the bad guy again. I looked at this, I say, thank you for your time, I couldn't just marry him. Looking at the. Looking at the numbers that were generated here, I see that obviously we're looking for a tax break. I think my feelings on this haven't changed since the last meeting. I don't believe in giving a tax break to these corporations. I understand that they could potentially go somewhere else. But at the same time, I just don't see justification for it. I see that this town is going to, those spots are going to get built regardless, somewhere in the future, in my mind. I want to make sure that we don't just do this just for, you know. I don't tell anyone you disagree with me. It's a revenue increase, but it's about 1% revenue increase. I don't really see how this is going to truly benefit the average taxpayer as opposed to what it also may entail in terms of infrastructure costs and just a number of things that, to me, you know, maybe I'm just nostalgic. You know, I've been in this town my entire life and I've seen a lot of changes, a lot of changes. And I just want to say, hey, you know, I know I can't stop time. I know things are going to change around here, but I don't see that we need to do this at this point. It's just my consensus on it. Simple as that.
Hey, Scott, I appreciate your input on it because it's helpful to understand both sides. You know, last time I was also adamantly against.
I do.
I also would like to, if you have any comments or questions concerning?
Not really. I just, I remember that unless it was a matter of not getting somebody to fill this spot.
Yep.
If this was a deterrent for these companies to come, if that is not set up that way, then we might sit on it for a while. And actually, they only have five years to, right, start work on it. How long has it been already?
No, five years before, well, the...
The permit, they'd have to pass.
The property has to be accepted into the enterprise corridor zone. It has to go through the process. And then when it's approved for the benefits, it's a five-year tax deferral.
I'm talking about the permit on the property itself.
Oh, yeah, that's a five-year permit with extensions permitted.
Okay.
And they will be coming back to P and Z for a larger, for an addition to that 1 million because they would like 1.2.
Is the five-year deferment, is that paraded or is it just a flat?
No, they permit for a modification and the modification gets approved, that starts the five-year clock.
But is that that same rate the whole five years?
Correct. So I just wanted to add what different value that I see. That property was approved and zoned as a warehouse. And now they're looking to add on another 200,000 onto it, so it'll be 1.2. The properties, and these are all estimates, by the way, just throwing it out there what the numbers might be. But we're looking at numbers that I think we can live with for five years. But at the same time, if I could be honest with you and say, if there's ever a company that you want to have in a warehouse, this would be the one, for lots of different reasons. I could tell you that they're a quality company. We had had a Zoom conference with them. We've had a in-person conference with them. We had different people sitting with them asking questions. We felt very confident and they were very happy to be accompanying me by coming to see us. I will say, I think I can throw some highlights out there and without giving away the store, but this company is a very family-oriented company because they don't work on Sundays. They try not to work on Saturdays. The only thing they would do is if they're backed up, they may do some of that, but very, very rare occasions. Very family-run company. If I throw a number of dollar value for starting pay or things like that.
Going on, you've got plus of only spring job to 31 an hour average.
Yeah, so you're talking about a starting pay of 31 an hour. The annual bonuses everybody gets at the end of the year. They're very team-oriented and family-oriented. I honestly think that if we're taking in, this is just an estimate, but if we're taking in 511,000 right now and it's going to be a warehouse, that's the company that I would put in. It's a five-year period, and I think the estimate, I could be wrong, but I think the estimate was after the fifth year. Now we're getting about 1, 2, 1.2 million dollars. That serves our town much better.
And if I could add also, they're looking at a $150 million investment in town.
You mentioned the word infrastructure. This site is required to have sewer paid for by the company to tie into our sewer, so it's their cost. Their cost also for tying into water. So I see the positives. I see the things that it can bring to, you know, obviously revenue coming into the town for five years is solid. And I can tell you this is a, this company is a solid company. I would say that after meeting with them, I felt very confident that not only would they come in and bring in the right people. Interview process, interview process is a three-hour test with a lot of math. At the end, it comes up with a site value. So very particular about who they hire. Very good. So good quality people coming in and out is what I would say. But they want to be also part of the community and be very supportive. And I've done some background on what they do with the other communities that they're at, and that's exactly what they do. They're part of the fabric, part of, you know, being like a business association and also doing things with the town.
What was the total number of jobs again?
150.
150 to start.
150 to 2, 100 to 250 to start. And then when they're fully up and running, between 500 and 600.
They don't do a third shift per se. They do a third shift that just monitors building, closes it down for the night, but they're there. The other things that, you know, they, so many things that they're just so positive about. They do all their in-house training. Normally, and this doesn't sound good for us, but we have, we have a maintenance person at nighttime. In that size of building, you obviously have to have more, you know, usually might think three or four, they got 12. The outside of the building that they said, and I've looked at the sites where they are at right now, architecturally fantastic. It's something that your town would be proud of by what it looks like. So again, I think this is something that we should consider. It gives an opportunity to still take in revenues, still have, by the way, it could take them say between eight to 10 months to start and build and get out.
Two questions. You mentioned the sewer. Okay. And there was talk before about asking whoever was in there to help with the pump station at the bottom of the hill. Is that any?
We just want to get them in first, but I do think that they would be amenable to helping out. They were very, very open about that.
And they're not, like with Skinal Kane, they proposed maybe two businesses. They just want the whole thing.
The whole thing. That's why they want to go to 1.2. And now it's adding one, and it would matter if everything goes right, it would be one meeting, get it to 1.2. It's me also.
I'm just trying to, a couple of vaxines that are out there, they don't want in, it's like, okay, we're looking for a tax break. I'm assuming that they're trying.
It's one of the top 10 things on their list, but it said, you know, obviously, community isn't a one. I was shocked when they said that.
What was it?
Community. Yeah. You don't start off your conversation with, we need your money. They talk of right for that, we want to be part of the community. That's what's really surprised me pleasantly. It was a matter of, they really wanted to do something positive. And when you, if the announcement comes out, I'm sure you'll be very happy with whom it is. But again, if it's a warehouse, I think that this is one of the best companies you could find.
It says bottom line for P and Z.
What are you looking at?
Down the bottom there. There would be an increase of 5, 11.
Again, she's just doing estimates, but close, so, yeah.
I mean, that's better than 10,000 again a year.
That's the idea. I mean, yeah, we could wait and absolutely wait.
You know, again, like I said, a question of it's a 1% revenue increase.
Yep.
1%.
1% X amount of jobs, and I want you to think of all of those jobs due to the revenue around here for the businesses.
I do appreciate the job and I appreciate that, you know, 51,000 hours would be a great wage for a lot of Plainfield residents, but also we've heard from testimony, and I thought this is a three-hour interview. I'm wondering, I've got immense amount of talent in that room tonight, and I'm sorry to be on the spot as a board event member. How do you think the average student in Plainfield is going to hold up to an interview process? Three, three hours of lost mathematics. I'm really putting you on the spot, I'm sorry.
Can I ask a question?
I can hear the question.
Oh, I was saying, you know, I, one of the comments made was that, you know, this is about the number of jobs that are actually going to go to the people in Plainfield if we have a very mathematically intense test or anything like that. That's just a random thought I was thinking out loud, I'm sorry.
I know if I'm trying to take a test right now, the three hours and has a lot of math, I'm not going to do that good. I'm hoping that someone just coming out of the high school that is interested in that type of job would be...
They should hit four maths before they graduate. That would be important.
And we've just, we've just helped our math things, math bar brings up high school as it is.
And take a look at average math, let's say, T scores. Hey, Scott, if they help you, I've noticed in the board event for the last couple of years, they've been trying to bring in subjects that would help manufacturing. Kids that want to go to manufacturing because, you know, there hasn't been a... Not a need, but there hasn't been a big push on that. And they have been doing that because they realize a lot of kids going to manufacturing.
Otherwise it'll be an hour.
Okay.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Again, let's just revisit what this really is going to start doing. So if you were to vote yes on this tonight, it entertains a motion for me to be able to then go to work with the state ECD and write a letter requesting the application to do this. So that's how it starts.
Page is number one. You say it's a process. What's the probability of getting it?
Seeing as over what's the property that is already? Yeah. And, you know, we have some letters from such support to do that. Yeah.
I'll make a motion to add 143 to 151 Plainfield Pike Road to the state listed ECD look sites for enterprise zone, corridor zone.
And a second sentence?
An approval from the VOS would allow the first selectmen an opportunity to write a letter of support to the state committee for the addition.
Motion's been made. Hearing none. I was second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
No? Motion passes. Item three, discuss the proposed new ordinance for a first reading. It's really supposed to be ordinance number 136. I got my numbers all messed up, so.
I agree.
Yeah. So what I did was, the... The fire marshal has been talking to me, actually the previous fire marshal has also spoken to me about inspection permit fees. So what he did was, he reached out to a couple of towns that do this already. So Thompson, Putnam, Killenley, Woodstock, Coventry, they have this charge for service through the fire marshal. We haven't done this. So this is another way for the town to be able to make sure that the permitting process is followed through. So I didn't know if you wanted to discuss further, do a second reading, whatever you wanted to do.
Is it correction?
Okay.
On page two. Down bottom. Apartment inspection approves, essential ordinance 77. Actually, it's time to act on it, so.
Just a question. It's a little bit of a difference when you're proposing a new ordinance, you have to also prove it and then go to a town meeting for the final approval. So if you want, we can move this to next month, and I'll have an action item on that for that. Item number four, discuss and approve National Earth Day Proclamation, April 22, 2023. We are going to recognize the fact that we have Earth Day coming forward. And whereas the global community now faces extraordinary challenges as environmental and climate change, food and water shortages, and global health issues can. Whereas all people, regardless of race, gender, income, and geography, have a moral right to a healthy, sustainable environment. And whereas it is understood that the citizens of the global community must step forward and take action to create positive environmental change to combat global changes. And whereas a sustainable environment can be achieved on the individual level through educational efforts, public policy, and consumer behavior changes. Whereas it is necessary to broadly diversify the environmental movement to achieve maximum success. Now, therefore, I Kevin Cunningham, First Select in Plainfield, Connecticut, here by proclaiming, April 22, 2023 is National Earth Day. The downtown Plainfield provide pledge to use Earth Day as a reminder and duty to serve best interests of the constituents by supporting environmental initiatives in our town and encourage others to undertake similar action. Date is the 11th of April. It'll be for tomorrow. For a fourth of the town clerk, but... Start with that. And this is a great time then to bring it up. On Earth Day, the town of Plainfield has been working with other groups. So this is to approve the national proclamation. I'll have a motion for that.
Make a motion to approve the National Earth Day proclamation.
Correct. Scott, thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye. Do we need a motion on that, or do we need to move it to table?
No, just discuss and propose. Well, I'll actually have it as an action item on the meeting. For those interested in helping out, want to support, on the way out, there is a paper on the glass countertop that talks about Earth Day this year. The plan is to work with Mission Musa and also Plainfield Beautification to do cleanup for Musa. They have, I think at this time, about 35 to 40 people who would like to help out. We've designated areas in downtown Musa to help. Your sign up and registration would be at the Little League and then come on over to downtown Musa and we'll sign you certain areas to take care of. There'll be bags and gloves and rakes and things to pick up items. We are really looking to clean up the downtown area as best we can. We've also got permission from, I can't think of the name, the Chinese restaurant right there. Okay. So we got permission from them to actually clean up that little corner where the bushes are, there are overgrown trees starting to fall down. So we're going to do that. We're also going to put plantings over there. But the idea is that we, at the end of it, we're all going to walk as a unit all the way down to the library in back just to be sure we can clean up another road. So it's, flyers will be out there in the back. It's, I think, from 8:00 AM, which started at 8:00, going until about 1:00. There'll be food served out at the end as well, refreshments. And I'm looking for you to come out and help us out. Consider Act On A Resolution. Now, this next one is the item we just talked about all night long. Recommending that the appropriation and borrowing of authorization for improvements to the WPCA North Treatment Plant to refer the project to the Planning and Zoning Commission for report pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 824. Refer such recommendations to the Board of Finance for consideration. Number four, call a special town meeting. Number five, setting a date for the referendum vote. And number six... And number six, approving the notice for the meeting and vote, and then authorizing the preparation of the exploratory text. It's a lot of words for, uh, just like two pages of resolutions are rewritten. All right, get a little water first. All right. So this is a resolution, the Board of Selectmen be resolved, the Board of Selectmen recommends that the town of Plainfield appropriate 4 million dollars for costs related to improvements of the WPCA North Treatment Plant, compromise of the design, construction, and installation of a replacement generator, and the design and construction of two secondary clarifier tanks, um, all as further described in analysis prepared by Paulson O'Neil. The appropriation may be spent for design, construction, and installation of costs, equipment, furnishings, materials, site improvements, survey costs, utilities, engineering fees, architectural fees, consultant fees, administrative costs, construction management costs, legal fees, net interest in borrowing, and other financial costs, and other expenses related to the project and financing. And if the town issues bonds and notes, and temporary notes in an amount not to exceed 4 million dollars to finance the appropriation, the amount of bonds or notes authorized to be reduced by the amount of grants received for the project and not separately appropriated to pay project appropriation. Further resolved, the Board of Selectmen refers to the project described above as the Planning and Zoning Commission for report pursuant to section 8-24 Connecticut General Statutes. Further resolved, have a copy for this resolution, uh, and the Board of Selectmen request the Board of Finance to approve the appropriation and bothering, yeah, bothering, borrowing authorization recommended above. Further resolved, that the contingent upon the Board of Finance's recommendation, the appropriation of the borrowing authorization in the foregoing proposal, the special town meeting to be held to consider the proposal on Tuesday, April 25th at 7:30 PM by the Plainfield Town Hall. Further resolved, that the pursuant to the section 77 of the Connecticut General Statutes, section 2.5 of the town charter, to referendum vote on the foregoing proposal to be held at a, in a reconvened town meeting on Tuesday, May 9th, 2023, between hours of 12 noon and 8:00 PM. The question shall be placed on the ballot under the following heading. Shall the town of Plainfield appropriate 4 million dollars and authorize the issue of bonds and notes in the same amount for a new generator and two secondary, secondary clarifier tanks at the WPCA North Treatment Plant? For the resolved, that due to the proper notice of the special town meeting and referendum be given, uh, in substantially the form presented at this meeting, a copy of which shall be recorded with and made part of the next of this meeting. Further resolved, that the town clerk is authorized in such official discretion to prepare a concise explanatory text regarding the resolutions, and the first selectman is authorized in such official discretion to prepare additional exploratory materials regarding said resolutions. Such texts and explanatory materials be subject to the approval of the town's attorney, and to be prepared and distributed in accordance to section 9-369B of the General Statutes of Connecticut Revision of 1958 as amended included in as applicable, a publication to the town letter, and as of April 10th, 2023, and we'd all decide. With that out of the way. What's your pleasure?
Make a motion, pass a resolution for the WPCA North Treatment Plant. I have a second motion.
Okay, motion and a second. Thank you for not having me read that again. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much for that. Item number six on here is discuss an act on purchase of traffic signs for road projects. I am working diligently to put something out to the public on Facebook, on the town website, and trying to get out there as best I can. For those who don't know, there are multitude of projects going on right now. For anybody who drove down Payson or went over by church, you can see that they were lying, or they've actually cut already. There will be two major projects for the Connecticut Water. One is gonna be for around the town hall and the streets here, including along the side of the town hall. The second project is where Blueberry Lane, Patty Lane up in that area, that entire area is gonna get done over as well. These are Connecticut Water projects, and that's just two of them. Everybody's seen that the, at least three companies coming through, subcontractors doing the fiber optic, that's going on. Then you're gonna have all the roads that are gonna be paved, though, we've got about seven or eight of those that'll be paved. Then we have the projects that we talked about before, which is going to be, and we're reading, you've got the sidewalks for Shepherd Hill, and there's three phases to that. Then you've got the sidewalks for, um, over by the, in front of the bank going over later road, uh, that's two, then you've got the, what will be the closure of Dow Road, uh, so we're doing the bridge project up there, though, it's gonna be a closure. So all of this information, I'm trying to put it out on, on a piece of paper so everybody can see, there's a lot of work being done over the next few months, uh, a lot of it. So what I, I was approached by our highway supervisor who said, yeah, but I would make sure people know when they're actually on the road. So we see item number six, what he did was, he went out to, uh, and he does have some money in his account, so he can take care of this, but he looked, he was looking for signage, and what he has is, um, East Coast Sign and Supply, talking about the things that he's gonna need, Uline Distributors is another one, and I think those are all they can really come up with at the time, but he has two quotes, uh, he's gonna need some cones, he's gonna need some, uh, four-legged fold-up sign bases, and 36 by 36 inch reflect roll-up signs as well, uh, the higher quote came in at 5,110, the lower quote came in at 3,355. So again, what would your pleasure be?
Make a motion, accept it. They're from East Coast Sales and Supply, incorporated for 3,355 dollars.
Motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Let's see what we got. I didn't make copies, but if you could, if you don't mind reading, this is a fundraiser for Northeast Connecticut Relay for Life. Just read the first paragraph. If you'd like to participate.
Let me read it out loud?
Oh, sure.
Hello, friends. My sister Gail and I are the co-fundraising leads for NECT Relay for Life this year. We are looking for volunteers to give us 10 to 15 minutes of their time on Saturday, June 10th, 2023, to sit in our flushing booth. What is a flushing booth, you ask? Well, it is similar to a dunking booth, but you sit inside a cage, and when the target is hit, the toilet on top of the cage will flush, and clean water will come flushing out onto the person sitting in the cage. Do you mind?
No, you don't have to go over.
After, how far?
You don't, you don't have to read it, I'm just saying, if you're interested. So I'm gonna reach out to the superintendent of schools to see if he's interested.